Good evening. I'm calling to order the budget public hearing for fiscal year 2026 meeting order on this May the 6th, 2025. We have all the commissioners present. I believe the agenda is approved and so we're going to go straight into the public hearing, so opening that and then passing over to Mr. Johnson to start walking us through.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have before you the updated materials from the proposed budget. We'll focus primarily on the general fund, although I will say we're presenting balanced budgets for all funds available. In the general fund, we are looking at a little over a 3% increase over last year. We did budget this year with a tax rollback in mind, so that was a direction from the board early on to try to continue to keep taxes as low as possible, so we have worked towards that. Obviously, you'll set the miller's rate at a separate date, but one goes in hand with the other. We're certainly working towards trying to give another rollback if that's prudent at that time. You will see that we have gone through our work sessions. I do want to give kudos to the staff and the elected officials. We did ask for no growth in this year's budget and they actually came in a little less than last year's budget. And then through the budget process, after we looked at all the revenues and we looked at what our sales tax revenue was going to be, we did end up with that little over 3% growth total in the general fund budget. You will see that there are some deferred reclassifications. Again, that's because we told people originally that we weren't going to do any reclassifications or promotions this year, so we have added some of those in. You can see some specific things that have been added since our last meeting and I'm glad to talk about any of those in particular. We do have a COLA budgeted in this year's budget. We are looking at on-call pay for our corner staff. That was a request from the corner. Superior Court judge's retirement supplement is there as well. And then some capital adjustments. We actually moved some things out of the general fund budget to pay for them other ways with other capital funds, so we have taken care of all those and made those changes as necessary. A couple of other operating adjustments I just want to bring to your attention. We do have a small increase for the Development Authority in their request. We do have the Development Authority bond payment. We have worked very hard renegotiating our contract. We have a one-year contract with Gold Cross that will actually be voted on tonight. We had to budget for that amount. That's an additional $600,000 in supplement. We feel like that's prudent and necessary for their operations as they continue to provide our ambulance service on our behalf. We did have a couple of issues with ARPA positions that were running out, so we worked with elected officials to get that done. And then you'll notice that there's an increase to the library budget. This is an update in the amount of $300,000. Now, this has nothing to do with any sort of library operations. As a matter of fact, it's the same amount as last year's library. It's just the way that Ms. Reese accounts for this. Historically, what we have done is we have budgeted for the library in the amount of about $2.8 million, I believe, $2.8 million. And then at the end of the year, we would make a transfer over to the state portion if we needed to make a transfer. This year, what we're doing is we're budgeting the full amount of the library in the general fund. And if we underspend this, then obviously it'll just stay in the general fund. It'll show as a savings. So instead, it's really an accounting moving of the money. Anything you want to add about that, Leanne?
Yeah.
Okay. So you'll see that $300,000 there. This is not, I know there's been a lot of discussion about what we're doing with the library. This is not planning to change any operations or anything like that. This is not any additional funding, costing taxpayers additional money. This is the same amount of money essentially they were faced with last year. We're just moving that around. And then, of course, you have some transfers there. Overall, we have a strong fund balance here, I'm sorry, a strong contingency here, rather, about 2.7%. We typically aim for 2.5%. We do have a couple of adjustments that we need to make. I believe still, they will be very small adjustments. I don't see those being very high at all, but we will make sure that we bring those to your attention. Obviously, as we move through the budget process, we will have to advertise the budget, I believe, on the 16th of May. So those adjustments will need to be made in the next week or so. So we're in the process of making those and we'll make sure that we note those for your final budget adoption that you will have after we advertise the budget. Any questions on that before we talk about the digest projection?
Talk about the difference in stormwater.
Difference in stormwater. Let me get down there to that.
Fund, I saw that too. It's on the very last.
Yep. Let me pull it up.
Looking pages.
No problem. Just let me get to the right one here.
The summary of proposed budgets.
Yeah, so you're showing a significant increase in the stormwater utility fund.
I believe that's just expected project money, infrastructure projects that they have going on next year.
It is. Pull the money out of the fund balance for stormwater and putting it into their budget for proposed projects that we're going to do this year.
Is that the same thing with the 2021 ARPA funds that's pulling it out of, there was a...
Right, those are the funds that we've already received and they have to be spent by the end of 2026.
It's ending and...
So we're now budgeting for those. That's correct.
And I think that's primarily the sewer project going on with Stacy.
Yes.
Budgeting the loss. What percent are we using or projecting?
We're actually using a 5% growth in the loss. That is based on historic averages and I believe we may even have a, yeah, we do have that local option sales tax collection history there. You can see the history going all the way back to 2022 and see that increase. So I think 5% is probably a conservative estimate. I believe it's probably going to come in a little bit higher than that, but we're going with 5%. Same on the growth in the digest. We did anticipate a 5% growth in the digest. I anticipate the growth in the digest will probably be a little bit higher than 5%, but if we are budgeting for a rollback, then obviously we didn't want to be too aggressive on the growth in the digest because one will cancel the other out. Any additional growth over 5% will be canceled out by the rollback.
Net millage is 4.568?
Yes, sir.
That's the current millage.
That's the current millage rate. That is correct. That is correct. You will notice, though, that we have already looked at the projected budget for the bonds and the, well, I guess just the bonds. We've already calculated the amount of money that we'll need for that, so you can see that there is a slight decrease in the bonds already. So there will already be a slight decrease on the tax bill due to the growth in the digest. We won't need to levy as much millage for those outstanding bonds. And just to let you know, those bonds, when we started, they were at a full mill and now we're down significantly lower than that. Fire department stays the same, their net millage stays the same, and the growth in the digest is enough to be able to handle the growth in the fire department without us adjusting that millage up or down.
On the IPTF fund insurance. There was legislation, there was discussion of the General Assembly doing away with that.
That's correct. So that legislation wasn't dropped this year. It's been discussed as a potential for next year redoing the insurance premium tax fund or maybe not even collecting that. For us, that's $12.5 million. We would have to find another way to absorb that. I think you'll hear local government statewide probably object to that because essentially what that's going to do is that's going to, we're going to have to find the $12 million somewhere. So we're either going to have to raise taxes or we're going to have to cut it from something else to make that work.
Any other questions, comments? Go up to the budget calendar real quickly.
Sure. So you can see we're here at the budget hearing now on 5/6. We're going to advertise the proposed budget, the newspaper as required by law on the 16th, and then we will have the budget adoption at our Board of Commissioners meeting on June the 3rd, the first meeting in June, and of course it'll take place or take effect July 1. I do want to add, Mr. Chairman, that I do still want to give kudos to the staff and the elected officials and this Board of Commissioners and everybody that worked through this budget process this year. It seems like it's been a longer process. However, we worked hard. I think everybody tightened their belt. Your budget memo said come in at or below what you had last year, and that's what people did. So we were able to use that as a starting point and when we added revenues in, we were able to make some necessary, you know, decisions regarding growth in the county, but far from being extravagant. I think everybody did exactly what you asked and tightened their belt.
The projected rollback rate?
We don't know what that number is yet. We're going to have to see the digest number before we can give you that number.
Any other questions? Comments from staff? But I do appreciate it if we ask you to start with the row up in digest and hopefully that is elected officials, the constitutional officers, they all joined in and very sensitive to their request for any changes. Any other questions or comments? Well, this meeting is going to, or hearing is going to stand adjourned at 5:42 and of course we'll reconvene for the commission.[1466.24] And of course, we'll reconvene for the commission. [inaudible][267.27][267.27]131 132 133
I'm calling to order the board of Columbia County Board of Commissioners, May 6th, 2025, meeting to order. Ask Commissioner Malir to open us with an invocation, please.
Thank you, if you'll bow your heads with me. Lord, as we come today, continuing to remember and honor the life of our fallen officer, our hearts remain heavy. We thank you for the brave men and women who serve as law enforcement officers and first responders in our communities. We're so appreciative of the outpouring of support from across the state as we remember Deputy Sykes yesterday, a region united in grief and gratitude. We pray now for the safety and well-being of all of our deputies as they face danger and difficult situations every day. Please grant them the strength and wisdom and compassion to do their jobs with integrity and courage. Protect them from harm and guide their decisions. Our hearts, our hearts are with all these uniformed men and women who continue in duty through this deep time of loss. Bless them as they stand in the gap, even in sorrow. Please shield them from harm and renew their courage and remind them that their service to others is not in vain. Please help us to continuously recognize the unseen weight that so many of them carry, the grief, the stress, the pain that often goes unspoken. For those whose minds are burdened with pain and questions, may this, may this be a time not only to grieve, but to find support. Help them find the courage to seek help when they need it, and may we, as a community, be ready to listen and support and care without judgment. We also lift up their families. Please, Lord, surround them with peace that passes all understanding. Let them not be forgotten in the coming days after all this attention is gone and we begin to go back to our daily routines. We pray today that this commission continue in wisdom and truth as we conduct business today in memory of the fallen and in honor of those with visible injuries and the invisible wounds from what they have seen and endured. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic
of which is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,
with liberty and justice for all.
Now, let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the April 15th, 2025, meeting in your packet. If you've had a chance to review them, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. To the agenda, Mr. Johnson, I think there are two items, I-2A and I-2B.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration, we have two items. This is a result, as you know, we had five Tuesdays in last month, so we've been two weeks away from committee or commission. So we have these two items coming straight to commission tonight. First item, I-2A, is a resolution. This is dealing with the annexation of property by the City of Harlem. And the second item, I-2B, is an application to the State Library System.
Are approved. Straight to the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have the items on this agenda. They've been through the necessary committees and received the necessary votes to be placed on the consent agenda. If you have no objections, I'll accept the motion to approve them all.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is that a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Bow to the lady from the first district.
Always. On to the debate agenda. Mr. Malir.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to appoint Austin Rhodes to the Library Board of Trustees to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Barry Pascal, whose term expires on 12/31/26.
Second. You're good with it?
I will please, yes.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Commissioner Allen.
Yes, sir. Oh, I make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision for property located at tax map 072, parcels 231P and 544, for the development of a new bank and associated site work.
Second.
It's a request to amend the PUD for the Plaza area over here. This is for the corner right here at Ronald Reagan, Evans Town Center Boulevard. Currently, the PUD calls for that area to be a community of retail, office, and residential uses. This will clarify that also allow a bank to be built in this location. Also give approval of this site layout. There'll be some minor tweaks as they go through full design. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does a bank qualify as retail or professional, or is it its own entity?
It's its own entity, which is why we're in front of you tonight adding bank to this criteria.
Any questions? If the motion is second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. One abstain? Still up?
We have an elevation of that bank, by the way.
We do.
It's very attractive. There you go. It's very attractive.
But these are not the bank. This is a...
There it is. It's a very attractive building. All right. Moving on, item I-1B2. If it pleased the commission, I'd like to make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice this application.
Second.
This was a request for a S-1 revision to allow for some retail sales at this location, but the applicant has requested withdrawal. He's going to work with staff, probably see him at a later date.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Item I-1B3, I would like to make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from S-1 and R-3 to S-1 for property located at tax map 082B, parcel 006, for a proposed private elementary school subject to the conditions enumerated in the April 17th, 2025 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
Do have another condition that staff would ask for consideration as well. This is a request to rezone some property to allow for Augusta Christian to build a new elementary school across from their current campus on Baston Road. Currently, the elementary school is off Furious Ferry Road, and that gives them some difficulties in managing pickups and security and other functions. So they have some property record across the street. We've had a lot of conversations with the applicant about their proposal. They're looking at about a 42,000 to 60,000 square foot building, a two-story structure. However, our, our major concern with this is traffic. Don't want to see Baston Road, excuse me, we don't want to see Baston Road become a parking lot. We definitely don't want to see kids running back and forth across Baston Road between the two campuses. So one of the, one of the conditions that staff is asking to add to this, I'd like to read it out loud for you. The applicant shall provide a traffic control plan that prevents school-related traffic from stopping and queuing up on Baston Road from all Augusta Christian School properties that abut Baston Road to the furthest extent possible. Traffic control plan should also include a pedestrian crossing plan to safely serve pedestrians walking or biking from one facility to the other across Baston Road. Traffic control plan shall be approved by the county engineer prior to implementation. Approved traffic control plan shall be implemented prior to the opening of the Baston Road Elementary School. Again, we have worked with this, this group. We've laid our plan out. A lot of this plan can be implemented rather quickly on their existing campus. So we feel confident we can make this happen, and it does give our county engineer the ability to modify that plan, make sure it does work and function if this board approves that condition.
And those are the conditions enumerated in the Planning Commission Report, not additional.
The one I just read is additional. We're asking that be added by this body.
What was your...
My motion was as...
Right.
Subject to the...
Subject to the conditions enumerated in the...
Which are, they must connect to county sewer.
April 17th, Planning Commission Report.
We do have some minor adjustments that will be allowed to meet fire code. But the fire marshals have got some things you need to look at. There might be some modifications to the site plan, shifting the building around to allow access for the fire truck. So that's the two that the Planning Commission placed on. We're asking for the traffic control plan, out loud, to be added by this body.
So do I need, I was going to say...
Yeah, so if you were inclined, Commissioner Allen, you would amend your motion to include that item in addition to the other items.
All right. Then I will so move to amend my previous motion to include the additional condition as out, laid out by Dr.
Second.
Is the applicant aware of all this?
We've been in conversation for a while about this.
Is there any, any comment from the residential area behind this?
I have not been made aware of any. Scott, have you heard any conversation?
No opposition.
So we are, there's a 30-foot buffer along the residential parts of this project. That, that is one of the conditions that they might have to increase and approach into that 30-foot buffer. Carries, if you could go to the site plan. Yeah, so you can see here the, the 30-foot buffer on the backside on the residential side. Once they get this playground and fire access and intention kind of figured out that buffer may be encroached upon a little bit in that corner, so that was one of the conditions allows us to work with the applicant, get this all laid out appropriately.
Questions?
Do we have a clarification on the amended motion? Do we have a second?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Item I-1B4, I would like to make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision, property located at tax map 081, parcel 500, to allow a driveway access on Marsh Point Road.
Second.
Current PUD does not allow driveways to access off of Marsh Point Drive. Access is required off of Marsh Point Alley. However, in this situation here, the property owner actually purchased two lots. They're looking to put a 24-by-25 garage structure there. They, they are showing it being storage for a golf car. They are showing that their actual driveway access to Marsh Point would actually be a large stone paver drive with grass infill, so not a typical concrete driveway. There's some pretty serious grade change between the, the front and the back of the, of the lots.
Can we go back to that picture, perhaps?
That retaining wall you see here would actually prevent access from this lot getting to that road in the back, while they're asking to come out of the front with their golf car. We've had this request from a couple other parcels along the stretch of road. They have been granted due to difficulties of getting access to the rear of those lots.
Any questions? The motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Item I-1B5, I would like to make a motion to approve the request for the conditional use for a daycare center, property located at tax map 078B, parcel 047.
Second.
This request is for a conditional use. So currently zoned P-1, however, if they want to put a daycare in a P-1 zoning, they have to have a conditional use approved by this board. They are making that request. This property was previously zoned to P-1 back in 2015, I believe. There was a good number of conditions placed on this parcel back in 2015 when the P-1 zoning was placed on it. The applicant has not asked for any of those conditions to modify it or remove. Most of them dealt with sight lighting, reviewing the, the layout. But the biggest thing we wanted to focus on was access to the site, corner of Anderson, Old Anderson Road, as well as Flowing Well Road. Access to Flowing Wells Road is, is going to need to be carefully looked at. Applicant stated they could have up to 200, potentially have up to 200 children in this facility. Dropping off and picking up 200 children is going to be a feat that must be carefully looked at. So we have a lot of conditions about traffic on here, what they can and can't do. But again, this is a request for a conditional use for, for a conditional use.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Yep, not everybody voted.
Huh?
Not everybody voted.
Who didn't vote? Vane, are you voting it down? Four to one passes. Sorry, my bad.
All right, item I-1B6, I make a motion to approve the request for a variance, section 34-1, for property located at tax map 060, parcel 1697, to reduce the required buffer width.
Second.
This request is to reduce the required buffer. The applicant has looked at developing this lot with just building the road and water sewer system, minor install of the storm system, and then letting the actual home builders grade their lots. They've been unsuccessful in accomplishing that task, so now they're back to doing a mass grading of this, this site. It's a kind of a turtle shell-shaped site. The center's high and everything falls off around it. So in order to, to handle the stormwater properly, they need to do a site grading. That triggers a 50-foot buffer requirement, so that 50-foot buffer will be from the red line in. They're asking to reduce that down to a 30-foot buffer. Parts you see around the course, that is a 30-foot buffer that is required by the golf course. So they, with the 50-foot buffer, you'll have a 30-foot buffer that's already in place on one side of their property line and a 50-foot buffer on the other side of the property line. So it'll be an 80-foot buffer between the homes and the golf course. They're asking to reduce their side down to 30, so you'll have 30-30, which equals 60. This parcel over here is owned by a trust that will not be developed, so not a major requirement for a big buffer there.
Sixty feet total.
Sixty feet total. That, that is the request, yes, sir.
Is there any opposition?
None that I've been made aware of.
And if this is for mass grading, will, will all that grading effect run off onto the golf course?
One of the things that we'll have to do is, is figure out how to handle that stormwater and get it all back to this pond, which is opposite direct, well, the golf course, this way and this way. So yes, they will have to, they will have to get that water into that pond. It cannot go straight onto the golf.
Any other questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Close? Carries four to one.
Trying to check everything off digitally and, and manually. Let's see here, trying to keep up. Item I-1B7, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2502, chapter 74, subdivisions, article 2, procedure for plat approval, section 7436, generally.
Second.
Staff has been working with the local development community as well as county management and a couple commissioners about some of our code, or ordinances in our code. One of the things that was talked about was the process of amending a concept plan. Currently, if this board approves a concept plan, any changes to that concept plan must come back in front of this board. Can be time-consuming. These changes, there's three, three basic changes we're asking. Kind of point those out individually. So number one is, if, if a rezoning is, is requested, it's going to require a conceptual plan. So if somebody goes from RA to R2, they're going to have to bring a full conceptual plan to this board for approval. Once that's done, if they alter that concept plan, but they do not increase density, they do not increase the number of units, if they do not significantly alter the interior layout, they don't alter the access to the adjacent development, basically, in other words, if they just tweak where some of the road's internal layout, that can be handled at staff's level. If they change densities, number of units, it comes back in front of this board for a public hearing. That's the first thing it changes. The second one, if a, if a development was proposed, I mean, with existing zoning in place, say an R2 site, our code already lays out the requirements to, to develop an R2 site. That concept plan comes in, staff has the ability to approve that based on what the code says. It does not have to come in front of this body. And lastly, we have clarified that if they are not dedicating any public utilities, any infrastructure, that may have, they can have that concept plan waived. So if they own 10 acres and they want to build a private road and put five houses on it, that doesn't have to have a concept plan. As long as they follow code already, it doesn't have to have, have a plan. So that's three changes. Be happy to answer any questions. Try to give a very brief overview of that, but that's the main thing.
Questions? Did you blow through to I-1B8 as well, or did you stick with seven?
I have not done B8.
Oh, I'm just making sure with him.
Yeah, I just did number seven. I just did the very first one, yes, sir. Does require multiple readings.
Granted. Any questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Now, I-1B8, I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2503, chapter 90 zoning, article 4, supplemental requirements, section 9013, non buffers and screening.
Second.
So this one deals with buffers. You just graded a variance for, for this situation. So currently, we, if this mass grading is done, it requires a 50-foot natural buffer adjacent to a public or private road or right-of-way. We're asking to reduce that down to 25 feet. In exchange for that, we're asking for that buffer be platted as its own individual lot. Currently, we can have a 50-foot undisturbed buffer, but it can be included as part of a parcel that is sold to a, to a home builder, to an individual. Over time, we have found that that homeowner sees that 50-foot of trees in their backyard, and they like to expand their, their living space into that 50-foot. They cut trees down, they manicure, they grass. Eventually, our buffer ends up going away. So the, the change here is we'll reduce it to a 25-foot buffer, but it must be parceled out separately, therefore it can be protected as a buffer. That's the first one. The second part is, is if they are building beside a parcel that is not regulated by zoning, such as a county-owned piece of property, Board of Education piece of property, any, any property that doesn't have to abide by chapter 90, that buffer is waived. So if you're building beside green space that the county owns and we know will never be developed because it's county-owned, it's green space, there's no need to have a 25-foot buffer beside 100 acres of green space. Next thing would be that you're building beside a floodplain, a wetlands, a creek, anything that is already state-protected. Creeks have a state-protected 25-foot buffer. We're not going to add another 25-foot buffer on top of that. So if you're building up next to a wetlands, something that's already protected, you don't have to buffer it again. We're not double buffering. That is the, big changes of that section. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions? There's a motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Item I-1B9, I make a motion to approve the first reading, ordinance number 2504, chapter 90 zoning, article 4, supplemental requirements, section 90-140, landscaping.
Second.
This modifies our landscape strips. This one we have, currently, we, our tree spacing is 40 feet on center for shade trees and 20 feet on center for ornamental understory trees. We're looking to increase that spacing to 45 feet and 25 feet respectively. We're also pulling back how close to an intersection you can be with those trees. We want to make sure intersections are open and people can see. So placement of street trees on 120 feet of intersection will be reviewed. We may have to make some changes to our spacing inside that 120 feet. The county engineer will, will do that review. And then we're also putting in a requirement that street trees that are not associated with a building have to be, have to figure out a timeline of when it's going to be installed, and I'll explain that. When a neighborhood is built, lots, typically, we let the builder of the lot put the tree in after they've finished building the house. They do the landscaping, they plant the tree. However, anywhere we have green space in a neighborhood, it could be, it could be open space, HOA space, a pond, those trees typically get left out until we get to the punch list and we have to go after the developer to, hey, when, when are you going to put these trees in? We want to move that to the beginning of the process. We're going to agree on when those trees go in prior to them building, turning everything over to us. So that's the, changes to our, our tree section.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. On to you, Vice Chairman Couch.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the first reading of resolutions number 25-03, Whispering Pines, section 4B, 25-04, Whispering Pine, section 5B, and 25-08, Jackson Heights, phase 2, to establish streetlight districts.
Second.
They're all streetlight districts requested by either the developer or the property owners. Had the public hearing, have no opposition. Your approval.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of resolution number 25-14, Stormwater Compliance Fee Schedule Revisions.
Second.
These are fee schedules that we have implemented to teach classes that are required by law to do excavating work, grading work. Our staff is licensed to teach those classes, so we're going to offer that up to the public. Anybody that wants to come in and take the class can do it. Our contracts are required by law to have this class, so we're now going to offer it to them. We also are establishing a fee for a rain barrel class, and that fee will cover the cost of materials, basically, the rain barrel. So when you come to class, you will leave with a rain barrel and your fee covers that cost.
Questions? Rain barrel questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve the contract with Alfred Benesch and Company for engineering services on the Wrightsboro Road widening project.
Second.
This is a project that we are using MPO funds, which is our, our metropolitan planning organizations, our counterpart with Richmond County, where we, we focus federal funds through the state to do projects. We have put out RFPs for design firms for the widening of Wrightsboro Road. Benesch was our, our pick for that. They were the lowest, most responsive, or I'm sorry, the most responsive bidder. We do have a deadline of getting this contract underway by the end of this fiscal year, so we're on a, a tight crunch, which is why it's in front of you tonight.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Commissioner Malir, you have the next.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve resolution number 2515, opposing the annexation of tax parcel number 020012 to Harlem, Georgia.
Second.
This is a situation where the county's been notified by the City of Harlem of their intent to annex a piece of property. This is a single property owner that wishes to annex a property into the city from the county in the unincorporated area. It's a little over 700 acres, 763 acres is what they're looking to annex into the city. I think the biggest issue that, that I have heard so far, with the exception of, of some strong citizen opposition to this, is the fact that Harlem is required to give it the closest zoning classification they have on their books to the classification that the county has. Currently, it's listed as RA in the county, which means there's one unit every two and a half acres for development. Their closest one would actually be five times that zoning. They would be able to get five homes on, on two and a half acres. So obviously, in our growth management plan, the county has plans for that area. We are responsible for the, for the roads leading in and out, the ones that are not in the city. We have to, to have maintenance on those. We have to expand the road system. We have to widen the roads. We have to provide water and sewer in that area. We, we didn't anticipate that, that the density would be five times what we had it zoned at. So this is being brought forth tonight. Again, the, the county cannot take a, a legal position. We have no legal standing as it relates to opposing this. This resolution is just asking the City of Harlem to not do this. To my understanding, I, I don't believe that we've ever had any conversation with a developer about the development of this property. I know that there was a, a time where we looked at maybe purchasing a piece of this property, but that really has nothing to do with why we are. this property, but that really has nothing to do with why we are where we are today. It's really more about the potential burden to the infrastructure and to the school system that could be placed on this property that would be in the city, and then the county would have to respond with infrastructure improvements that we are not prepared to make. So that's the biggest reason we are asking them to, respectfully asking Harlem to abandon the pursuit of the annexation of this property.
Mr. Chairman, as part of my motion, I ask that the resolution be read into the record.
Fair enough.
Edit.
You want me to, you...
Resolution Number 2515, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Columbia County, Georgia, opposing the annexation of tax parcel ID number 020012 by Harlem, Georgia. Whereas on March 27, 2025, the Board of Commissioners of Columbia County, Georgia, here and after the board, received a notice of annexation from Harlem, Georgia, indicating the intent to annex the 736.3 acres comprising tax ID number 020012 henceforth property into the City of Harlem from the unincorporated area of Columbia County, Georgia, which notice is attached as Exhibit A notice. Whereas, the property is currently owned by Log Creek LLLP, a company located in Bogart, Georgia, the owner. And whereas, it is the understanding of the board that the owner, who has not contacted the Columbia County to discuss potential development of the property and who is not from Columbia County and therefore not invested in its long-term success, intends to construct a high-density residential development, known as the development. Whereas, such a development, which would have a density that is approximately five times its current zoning, would overly tax the current infrastructure of the county, including placing an undue burden on the Columbia County school system. And whereas, the development does not fit within the Columbia County's comprehensive plan. Whereas, the citizens of Columbia County have overwhelmingly indicated their objection to the development. And whereas, the citizens of Columbia County, including the citizens of Harlem, Georgia, have expressed their desire for the board to itself oppose the development. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of Columbia County, do hereby notify Harlem, Georgia, of its unequivocal objection to the proposed annexation, and respectfully request that Harlem abandon this pursuit for the best interests of the citizens of Columbia County.
Thank you.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. All favor raised your right hand. Motion carries. Do Commissioner Caraway?
Would it be appropriate if I asked that?
On you.
Have recommendations?
We could, yeah, we could read the recommendation before you have a motion. Is that what you should do?
I was asking if it would be appropriate, or...
You can. Yes, certainly. We can do that.
Certainly.
We can make the motion. So this is, yeah, I can give you this, and then if, after you're, I can give you the information after you're inclined. If you want to make a motion one way or the other, you could certainly do that.
Yes.
So, yeah, this is regarding the library. I know there's been a lot of discussion about what the county may or may not be doing or have contemplated when it comes to the library. The information that's brought to you tonight is after careful consideration, the staff is requesting that the county withdraw from the Greater Clarksville Library Region only to become a single county region within the state's library system. What this would mean is Columbia County would have a little bit greater autonomy to address the unique needs of our citizens in Columbia County. However, we would still continue to receive state funding, access to all the current state library resources, such as pines, Galileo, all the things that they have in place. We would still have a regional board that would be the governing body over the library, that would be appointed by this board, but they would be the governing body. So nothing changes there. We have been in contact with the state system. They actually made the recommendation that Columbia County was a good candidate to be a single county region and thought that that may be suitable for us. So we have discussed that with them, and we have been given the preliminary approval from the state that we could be a single county region within the state library system effective January 1, 2026. What that would do, that would give us time to work on the implementation of becoming a single county region, to have the board in place. It would also give the state time to place the other libraries that are part of the Greater Clarksville, either in another region or for it to continue to be a standalone region. But the state has expressed their desire for Columbia County to be a single system. We think this is in the best interest of the county. I know there was a lot of discussion about the county pulling out and being an independent library. We were exploring all of our options to see what might be best for Columbia County, but I think we all are in agreement that staying in the state system would be in the best interest of the citizens of the county, which is what we've strived to do. And by becoming a single county region, I think we have accomplished everything that we need to do to make sure that the needs of our citizens are met without any lack of funding or anything like that. So we would continue to receive all the state resources that we have in place now. We would still have to have a state director, or a regional director, rather, that would be a state position. So not a lot changes if we were to become a single county region.
In terms of operation, basically transparent to current situation?
Yes, sir. That is correct. Operationally, we would be virtually identical. We would have a little bit less funding from the state, but we would also have two less positions from the state. So it actually balances out. There would be no additional need for funding on the county side. If we do, it'd be a nominal amount compared to the $3-plus million budget. We may have a little bit more money for the courier or something like that that we may have to pick up. But that's what we'll be doing between now and January, working through this process to see exactly what we would need to do. And when I mentioned to you that I may have a few small modifications to the budget, this is one that we're talking about. I would think it would be less than $30,000. So, but we're working, we're going to work on that should the board decide that you would like to be a single county region. If you so do, if you decide that way tonight, we will make that application tomorrow. We have notified the state of our intent to do that if the board is so inclined to go that route.
So pines, we still have pines.
Yes, all the services we have now. Every service we have in the library now. To the user of the library, nothing will change.
Okay. I make a motion that the Columbia County Library withdraws from the Greater Clarksville Library Region to become a single county region within the state library system to become effective January 1, 2026.
Second.
Any other questions? Is motion second on the floor. All favor raised your right hand. Motion carries. Any other legal matters?
No legal matters.
No requests for review by committee?
Oh, sure.
Public comments? There are Ming Lin.
Commissioners and county attorney and data and everybody here. I was here a few years ago pertaining to the land that was took away from me by eminent domain purchase. And that's five years ago. County at that time claimed that they have all the fund ready. They even have the design ready. In the court hearing, claimed to the court that they are ready to go as of yesterday. And as far as consequential damages, they never paid us that because they say they paid us the land value, but they say that we, we're still going to have the access to the red light control at Gibbs and Washington Road red light. And therefore, when they build a road, we can use the road and have our access and all the land in the backside, which now if we lose the right-of-way, we would not be able to provide that access to ourselves if we don't own it. But because of the claim of the county saying that the road will be built, and actually, that was the prerequisite of being able to use the law of eminent domain over the public use, public good and no alternatives, and you got, you know, you're going to pay us fair and just compensation. But at that time, because consequential damages was replaced by saying that we're going to have access through the road that Columbia County is going to build. So that never come into the picture. Now, after five years now, three years ago, I was here in front of the Commissions, and I presented my concern, why after so many years, the road is never built. We were told, oh, we just lack a little funding, and we're working on that. And I said, I thought you told the court, you got all the funding. I mean, it's in the transcript. So what happened? So apparently, in the court, the truth was never told. It was misled, a statement to misled the court. And now, after three years, actually now five, in the meantime, real damages were done to me because we unable to market the properties, even though in the meantime, we got so many inquiries. But everybody always want to wait until the outcome of the road. Otherwise, I don't have direct access. So my land is totally changed and handicapped. I don't have an access where I'm fronting all the frontage on Washington Road and the red light control curb cut, which I have with Department of Transportation. That was all taken away from me, and I am powerless to do anything for myself because if that road doesn't build, I am doomed. All my value of my land diminished. I really would have no way of building it or developing it or selling any part of it other than the front portion to anybody because they have no access. That road right-of-way is owned now by Columbia County. So I came back here and present myself to the county commissions, and I was told about a year ago, and that I should go ahead and deal through the county manager, Mr. Johnson. So I did because I was told that you're all working on the funding. So maybe the whole problem can be resolved. And, but every time I was told that, we're getting close. And sometimes it's saying, we identify as source of funding. So give us a little more time. And then on and on keeps on going. And then a year ago, which is after four years of no action, I finally had to bother the county manager again and saying, what's going on? And I think he, I mean, I guess he had a difficulty of addressing me. I guess it's not just depend on him, it's the whole county. So he told me that, well, I'm going to present it to the county commissioners and see if we can get it, you know, one way or another out of them. So I was told that it was presented. And then he said, he would let me know. Hopefully, we get good news. And we don't have any news. So I had to go to his office, and I don't know whether he's shunting me or what, but I just have to keep going until one day I ran into him. But I guess, you know, that's a pressure on him. I was told, county is not going to do that anymore. We dropped the project. I say, that's devastating to me. What about me? What about, you know, impact to my land? He says, well, we can sell it to you. I said, that's not fair. What if I don't have the money? So you end up, you messed up my land, my access, my value, and you just say, too bad? Oh, you can buy back. I said, what if I don't have the money to buy back? I mean, I didn't anticipate with the prophecy that, hey, the land deal is going to fall apart. And all the proposed project, they're going to default. So the claim that the county used to use the power of eminent domain to take the property, whether I like it or not, fooled me. Okay? That was all now turned out to be a default. The county is not doing it. The county never did have the funding. They were really not ready. So all that little design of that intersection was to pacify the court. All that talk about, we ready, we got it, we ready to start construction as of yesterday. That was all become a lie. Now, nobody is above the law, you know? I mean, I got real consequential damages. I cannot have access to red light. I cannot develop my land in the back because I don't own that right-of-way anymore. So I am supposed to have the money to help myself out of the bind. Well, what happened to the people who default or the entity of the county? Can they just default and have no responsibility and say, too bad? In fact, I was told by frustrated county manager, he says, so sue me, sue us. That's what I was told to the face, just sue us. Now, I'm very, very disappointed. Okay? I'm a law-abiding citizen. I pay my taxes. In fact, if you check, in my lifetime, I pay over a million dollars to Columbia County in taxes. Okay? I contribute. Okay? Now, I have, I like to, originally, I wrote it down. I get emotional. Okay? Because this is my feeling, you know? I mean, so if you pardon me, I'm reading, okay? My name is Ming Lin. I'm bringing to you an issue that you all can identify with, you can identify with. Whether you are just an ordinary Columbia County citizen like me, a newspaper reporter, county official, a county commissioner, who are representing the interests of the county's citizens. What makes this country great from most other countries exist in the world is that we are a nation of rule of law, in which no one is above the law, and all are equal under the law. Right or wrong does not change or influence by the subject's size, shape, power, financial status. It doesn't matter if you are an ordinary person or a powerful person or a powerful entity like a Columbia County government. So, and to the commissioner here today, I would especially like to gain your concurrence, that your political title and functions in this county government is, is to serve the interests of the citizens of this community which elected you, and to facilitate the advancement of this county's governmental role, roles to have honorable, responsible, productive governance. Should the county government lost its sense of mission and existence and turned against its own constituents and turned into a bully, started to antagonize its citizens, abuse its given power, causing havoc to harm citizens intentionally. Corrective measures should be initiated by the Board of Commissioners to rectify the wrong, which is part of the purpose of having an elected board and position of commissioners in the first place. You can be a mediator and a balance between the average citizen that you have been elected to represent and a government entity, which is like an 800-pound gorilla. They got deeper pocket than any of us average folks. Okay? And that, a government entity who is also not above the law. So I like to say that once you all walk out of this county complex, or one day you retire from your position, you all will be just like me, any of them. We are a citizen of this country. We are residents and constituents of this county. We are a citizen of this country, we are residents and constituents of this county. You will be the same. How would you like your government to treat you? How would you like your government to handle you? To tell you, just sue us and too bad about your damages? My damage is gonna be big and huge, okay? So why can't the county or the representative, because county is a, it's just an imaginary entity, consists of all the officers, everybody involved? Why can't we bring out our decency? If you do somebody wrong, does it require somebody had to sue you and have the court force you to pay restitution before you be willing to say, okay, let me, let me, let me see what I can do? So why? I mean, is county intended to bully me? All the residents, we all in the same position. We cannot expect the county to conduct yourself honorably? We had to force you by court? Why? How would you like to be treated? I ask you also treat me. That's basic biblical principle, okay? So let's not give me any technicalities, okay? If something is not intended, it turn out wrong, okay, we all reasonable people. Can we not get together and work out some kind of a solution that I can be made, if not totally whole, but in a better position and to recover? Is that unreasonable? Just because county have a deeper pocket than I do? I know you have a legal firm, you know, on the payroll, and I don't, but really, do we really have to be like that? You know? And so I'm reading, I'm speaking out of the, you know, the written part, because I just wanna do my best to reach out to all of you. You are no different than me. You are a citizen too. You are a human being. How would you like people treat you that way? Caused you to face the damages with no solution. The only solution you can have is you come up with the money yourself and help yourself. That's not fair. That's not justice. And it shouldn't be like that. Columbia County can put out the mission statement, and it doesn't mean anything? I hope I can reach out to the heart of you all, okay? Be fair to me. Because any other entity in a big government can do the same to you. Really want that? Can we not all be reasonable, ethical about it? Get together and help me to recover? After all, the fault is on the side of the county. They the one did not follow through the project that they use as the name, as the qualification to use the power of eminent domain, to take that land from me where I have no choice. So if you fail on that, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Lin.
Thank you.
Karen?
My name is Karen Parham. I live at three, four, two, one Hilltop Trail in Evans. I'm here tonight as the CEO of the Freedom to Read Coalition of Columbia County, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. First, I want to offer my sincere condolences to the Sykes family. I hope our community can continue to stand together in support of his loved ones and our officers during this difficult time. Recently, as you are aware, I uncovered through an open records request that Columbia County was considering withdrawing from the Georgia Public Library Service. The email traffic revealed a level of inquiry that clearly would not have occurred without direction by county leadership. Ordinarily, I take time to reflect before sharing information, but in this case, I released the documents quickly. Why? Because across the country, we've seen government bodies, much like this one, call sudden special meetings and vote to withdraw from library systems without getting public input first. Based on previous actions taken by this board and county leadership, we did not trust that this process would be transparent. We wanted the public to have a chance to respond before you had an opportunity to act. I'm gonna still go into this part, even though you didn't vote on this. So there are no benefits to withdrawing from the state system, and quite frankly, it shouldn't have even been on the table. It would mean losing state funding, taking on new costs to create and maintain a local catalog, and reducing services our residents rely on every day. The only discernible reason appears to be to bypass the requirement to hire licensed professional librarians, presumably to enable censorship. But even in the future, if you do give up state funds and cut ties with Pines, you are still bound by the First Amendment. And to be clear, censorship is happening. I believe Chairman Duncan has stated that there is no book banning in Columbia County. But since January, nine books dealing with human sexuality and puberty have been pulled from shelves and held in a back office. A book that was previously displayed in this very chamber without ever being properly checked out and was never returned, was held up as an example of so-called harmful to minors, and it's now missing entirely from the library's collection. Two books have been formally banned, one in two thousand twenty-two and another in two thousand and twenty-three. So to say there is no book banning is not only misleading, it's demonstrably false. And I just wanna say, pulling out of Pines isn't popular. We had started a petition on Friday. As of four PM, we gathered eight hundred and ninety-seven signatures. That number is still growing, and I will give that to Ms. Crowley when I'm done speaking. I'd also like to address the recent appointment to the Library Advisory Board. Our organization strongly recommended Sandra Bowers, a recently retired circulation clerk with a degree from Georgia Tech and deep institutional knowledge. She is not a licensed librarian, but her experience and perspective could have contributed meaningfully to the library board. Instead, you appointed Austin Rhodes. While I have no personal issue with Mr. Rhodes and have not interacted with his show, he is widely known for holding strong partisan views. The choice suggests as a, suggested deliberate rejection of balance and a missed opportunity for community unity. We're left wondering, where is this all heading? The decisions surrounding our public libraries since the September two thousand twenty-four vote to pass unconstitutional shelving guidelines have not reflected sound governance. Instead, they appear to be emotionally driven reactionary choices. I urge you to remember, your power is not unlimited. The public is watching, and the Constitution still stands. Thank you.
Ms. Parham. Ms. Parham, may I ask, you're a journalist, correct?
No, I'm not.
I'm sorry, you have a blog?
I have a blog, that's it, yes.
Do you know the, are you, can you, do you know the actual terminology of the First Amendment? It's only three lines.
Yes, I read the First Amendment.
Do you know the actual terminology?
I don't have it off the top of my.
Can you relay to me what aspect of the First Amendment? Because the accusation has been levied by many people.
Yes.
Emailed us. What aspect of the First Amendment is potentially at risk?
We have the right to receive information.
No, that's not part of the First Amendment.
But through case law, it is. And if you want to further discuss this, I'm gonna have to direct you to my attorney, and maybe you could have Mr. Driver.
Are you familiar with Roth versus the United States in nineteen fifty-seven?
I'm not going to answer these questions.
Well, it's just a matter of the freedom of speech does not include the right, according to the Supreme Court, to make or distribute obscene materials.
Okay, there are no obscene materials in our library. There are no obscene materials in our library. They do not meet the legal definition of obscenity.
And what is that legal definition?
That legal definition, I do not have right in front of me, but I can tell you right now, it does not meet the legal definition. I will remind you that everything that you are stating is being recorded.
It always is.
I'm sorry, hold on, ma'am, just hold on.
Everything is being recorded, ma'am. I don't know if that was supposed to be threatening to me, but we're always recorded.
It's not threatening.
We're always recorded, Ms. Parham. All of our meetings are.
Yes, of course.
We're a very transparent public and open to the public. I was just asking, what aspect of the First Amendment that we are constantly being accused of ordering, breaking, do we need to be aware of? Because I am not aware of any aspect of the First Amendment, which states, if you'd like me to read it, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion." Congress, let me repeat that, "shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion" or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech.
I am not gonna have this.
Or of the press.
You can direct these.
Or the right of the people.
Mr. Driver, you have an attorney right here.
And a petition with government for a redress of grievance.
You pay him.
That is all the First Amendment.
About case law and how things are understood regarding case law and everything else.
I'm just reading the First Amendment, ma'am.
Yes, I know, but you're trying, you're trying to catch me in some gotcha.
I am not asking you to catch me when I got you.
I am not playing this game with any of you anymore. No more.
Ms. Parham.
I am done, I have had it. Enough is enough.
I'm sorry you feel that way, ma'am. I just wanna know what it is that we can do to satisfy these questions that have been brought before us.
My name is Adelaide Rawls.
Ms. Rawls, could you pull the microphone down a little bit so we can hear you, please?
My name is Adelaide Rawls. I live at nine zero one Sturbridge Drive, Evans, Georgia. I wrote this before you voted, but I'm going to read it. I love my library, and I live close enough to walk, so I like to walk to the library with my family. I love that we're connected to Pines, because I read a lot of series, and sometimes my library, Evans Branch, doesn't have all the books in that series. I don't like to read half of the series in Evans. A lot of the series I read have cliffhangers at the end, and when I can't find the next book at my library, I go to one of the librarians or the computers in the kids' section and put a hold on it. But I can't do that if we're not connected to Pines. My family is a family of readers. Well, really, it's me and my parents, but even my siblings love to go to the library and look through the kids' section or play games with the computers, just walk around. I would just like you to reconsider pulling the Evans Branch out of the Pines library system. Thank you for voting to stay in the library system and protect the library that I love. I hope you will keep this in mind when you make future decisions about the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rawls.
Will, sir, just state your name and address on the record, please, sir.
Oh, yes, my name is Claude. I live in Grove Town, Grove Town, Georgia. Good evening, as team members of the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. By the way, I just want to, before I read my comment, I was gonna say, Mr. Ming, I hope he gets his money back. That was very emotional. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on a matter that affects not only our children, but the future of our community, education. As you are aware, the federal government has proposed changes to the Department of Education, adjustments that could significantly influence policy, funding, and administrative processes. While these changes aim to address national concerns, the question that weighs most heavily upon us is how would they affect Columbia County schools? Our educators work tirelessly to ensure that every student receives a high-quality education, preparing them not only for academic success, but for the challenges and opportunities that lie beyond the classroom. Federal policy shifts, whether in funding allocations, curriculum standards, or administrative oversight, have a direct impact on ability to maintain and improve this level of excellence. As members of this board, you present a crucial voice in safeguarding the educational integrity of our country and county. I urge you to thoroughly examine the federal proposals and assess their potential effects on our schools. Will they provide necessary resources for students and teachers? Will they alter local control and decision-making? Will they improve or hinder the overall quality of education in Columbia County? Transparency and communication are essential in moments like this. Our community deserves to be informed about the possible repercussions of federal decisions. Therefore, I ask this board to initiate discussions with state representatives, educational leaders, and policymakers to ensure Columbia County's interests are protected. Education is the backbone of a thriving society. Our children, which I have three in the education system, our future leaders, business owners, and workforce deserve nothing less than the system that supports their growth and success. We owe it to them and to stay proactive, engaged, and diligent in evaluating these changes. Thank you for your time and your commitment to the future of Columbia County students. Thank you.
Yes, sir, and do I have to go to the Board of Education? Yes, with them, because we really don't have a, we're not involved in the education process as it relates to schools, so I'd recommend going and speaking to one of their meetings.
Absolutely, and the reason why I came to the Board of Commissioners is because you guys had a pocket, like Mr. Lin said, you guys have a very deep pocket, so I'm sure when it comes to money, you guys have a say in that, I'm sure, right?
Actually, the school board has over twice the money that we do.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Kearney? John? Kenny, I apologize.
Kenny.
Yeah, well, it looks like Kenny, but I apologize.
Hi, I'm John Kennedy, I'm forty-four ninety-one Avenue Drive. So the library's been in discussion a lot, and you've heard a lot from folks who have a certain position on the content of certain books that have been discussed. There's still children in here? So I believe it was in the March meeting when Commissioner Malira held up a book that had some visual illustrations of fellatio being performed, and a picture's worth a thousand words. And so when you have books that include words that children don't understand, that's one thing. Children understand pictures. The argument about this, the content of these books, has largely revolved around the shelving and categorization of these books, and not whether or not they belong there to begin with. Now, I'm not here suggesting that we remove the books, they're there, that's fine. But when you look at, you know, Commissioner Allen, you mentioned the First Amendment, right? And all of the teachings and a lot of what I've read, the First Amendment is to protect us, or to limit the government, to limit the powers of the government, infringement. And so like freedom of the press, it allows us to be critical of the government, freedom of religion, so forth and so on. You know, when we look at what's happening here, it's this slippery slope, it feels like sometimes, where, you know, we're getting so close to the edge that at some point, we're just gonna slide off the edge of the cliff. In two thousand twenty-four, Gallup released a poll. They polled Americans age eighteen and above, and in that poll, they asked about their sexuality and how they identify. And eighty-five point six percent identified as heterosexual or straight. Seven point six percent were in the LGBTQ plus community, and six point eight percent just declined to answer. And of that, the transgender movement totaled about one point three percent of the total population. These folks, they absolutely deserve a voice, and from what we've heard, and I mean, they have a voice. They have a voice, and they have that right to their voice, and nobody's arguing that. You know, I just, I have to think, you know, we keep hearing the term censorship, and censorship is a very strong word, it's a very powerful word. But there's, I think, some conflating going on between censorship and reshelving, or censorship and lack of government funding. The government is not saying that these materials, you can't have access to these materials. Just because the government decides not to pay for it, not mean it's censorship. There are plenty of taxpayers in this county who do not come to these meetings, who do not speak to you directly, but who would share this same opinion. The more that censorship is thrown around, the more power it loses when it's not used correctly or appropriately. And I just, you know, I felt led to come and speak to you from, not necessarily the other, the opposing viewpoint, because I think that creates divisiveness, just another viewpoint. I'm not saying that these books shouldn't be there. I don't particularly care that my taxpayer dollars are paying for them to be there, but I'm not gonna decide whether or not someone else has that right. But to use the word censorship and throw it around loosely, I think it's a bit of a stretch. And interestingly, And interestingly, you know, just an observation, you know, when Gallup surveyed its respondents, they're all 18 and over. There are no children. And, you know, I'm sure they have their reasons, although they didn't come out to say why, but there's a reason why they survey adults and not children. So with that, I just want to share another perspective about the library, another perspective about these books. Not to be argumentative against those who feel strongly about it, but just to provide some feedback that there are other viewpoints in the county that are not as loud, that are present. So, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Therese, who was, well, Scott Nichols? Come on down, sir. Just state your name and address of the record, sir.
My name is Scott Nichols, Three Plantation Hills. I've got one question of you commissioners. Who has a library card? Two? You have one? When was the last time you checked out a book?
There you go.
So you're really not users of the library? We are, am I correct? So I just wanted to make that point, that we're the users. Think big.
Are you a user of the children's section of the library?
Yeah. Do you have a library card?
I asked you, are you?
Oh, yeah, right here.
Children's section?
Right there.
Children's section, sir.
Pardon me?
Are you a user of the children's section?
No, but I use the library, and I don't want anyone banning books. I think that's the worst thing in this country.
Don't agree with you. See, that we agree with you.
So I think book banning should be absolutely off guard. Ken Franklin, Andrew Carnegie would roll in his grave. My point. Thank you.
Mary? Mary? I apologize, I can't. Thank you.
My name is Mary Goddett. I live at 6108 Manus Court in Markness. I have a master's degree in library science, master's degree in information science, both from Indiana University. I am the Health Sciences Librarian at Eisenhower Army Medical Center. I cannot speak too strongly against your dropping out of Pines. That is a dump out of the state system. It is a wonderful system. Can somebody answer a question? Will we have access to interlibrary loan if you drop out?
We've already voted not to drop out, ma'am.
We're not dropping out. We're becoming a single county. We're not, everything that state has, we have going forward. Pines...
But why, what's the purpose of doing this? What are you gonna, what are you gonna gain from this?
The Oversight Board will be all Columbia County.
Why is that, why shouldn't it? Why don't you have the professionals who run the state library? They're the professionals. You guys aren't professionals. The library board here in town is not in Columbia County. They're not professional librarians. You need professional librarians to oversee. And I also have an issue with, you say you're against the banning of books, but you're not against deciding where the books are gonna go in the library. Now, I have never understood as a librarian, and I've worked in public libraries and medical libraries, I have never understood, if you don't want your child reading a book or picking out a book in a library, why aren't you going to the library with that child instead of just dropping them off at the door? Librarians are not babysitters, but a lot of parents treat them as babysitters.
Could I proffer a hypothesis, ma'am? A hypothetical? I'm with my child in the library, sitting at the table. Ask my child to go pick out a book 20 feet away. My child discovers a book that should not be in the area that my child has looked.
Well, why aren't you, if you're that concerned, why aren't you...
Think that we should hold the hand of every child in the library?
Why aren't you standing with your child at the bookcase? Why are you sitting 20 feet away if you're so concerned?
It's a hypothetical, ma'am. No one can possibly hold their child's hands the entire time, and nobody's going to...
I suggest this organization get its head out of the Dark Ages and the fascist thinking of Nazi Germany.
Thank you for that term. Thank you.
I wish you would get your heads out of the Dark Ages, and if you paid as much attention to the quality of water in this county as you do to trying to control where books should be on the shelf in the library, maybe I wouldn't be getting letters from the county telling me that my water is not up to state standards. Thank you.
I did ask where the nine books Karen mentioned, and the response came from the director of the library. They're still in my office. I wanted to read them thoroughly, read each one of them before reshelving based on the guidelines. We want them to just follow the Pines process, and you can definitely request it. So she has those.
Pines.
Okay. Come on down, Ronald. Come on down.
Ron Batista, Evans, 640 Hanbin Drive. Mr. Allen, I know you did kind of needle Karen as to the meaning of the First Amendment, and, you know, you gave a very textual interpretation of it. And she...
Literally.
And she, yeah, I know, but case law interprets the Constitution in a million ways. Let's say, for example, Roe v. Wade. Under what amendment was that decided that that was a right? You know?
I'm not aware of that.
The Fifth Amendment. Established a right to privacy, which is not specifically in the language of the Fifth Amendment, but it is, it turned into a right until not too long ago, of course.
Sir, I was simply asking. I personally have been accused of violating the First Amendment with this discussion. I'm curious what part of the First Amendment or what interpretation of the First Amendment I violate.
She gave you a reply, you know, that there is a...
There is case law, but I'm still not sure which part of case law or what accusation I've been given.
You know what penumbral rights are?
Sir, I'm not an attorney. I'm just asking what I've done to violate the First Amendment.
They're rights teased out from the Bill of Rights, you know, just through various, you know, cases and whatnot. And like I said, Roe v. Wade is a perfect example of that. You had said something about obscenity. What is the definition of obscenity?
I don't have that. I can just tell you that it was founded in 1957 case study.
You know what the Miller Test is?
No, sir. Again, I'm not an attorney, sir. I mean, I...
Okay.
You can ask me the questions, but I'm not gonna know the answer.
Why would you talk about something that was obscene when you don't even know what the definition is?
Don't let me see it.
That's it.
Ed Meese, sir. Ed Meese.
Howard Johnson?
Good evening. I'm Howard Johnson, 252 Silver River Road. I'm here to speak. Initially, I came just because I was concerned about the message traffic that we had seen regarding the potential to withdraw from the state library system. So I do want to thank the commissioners for changing course in that regard and keeping us with access to the resources that we currently enjoy. That said, I do find the reshelving of books concerning. I do find the hands-on approach that this commission is taking concerning. Do any of you have a master's in liberal science? Are any of you professional librarians? Do you have any personal experience running a library?
Absolutely not.
In that case, why are you appointing people who also do not have such experience, who do not have such qualifications?
Elections have consequences, and the appointments to that board go within the election of these people.
That's excellent, sir. As a representative of this county, why are you appointing members to the county library board who are not qualified to manage a library?
They're not managing the library. They're an advisory board. We have professionals that manage the library.
All right, so who is making new policy?
We do.
And you've just admitted that you do not have experience managing a library. So my question is, why does this commission have their hands on the library?
Sir, I don't have experience building a road, but we're in charge of that.
And you delegate to companies that do have experience building the roads?
But we decide where those roads should go.
Yes, and you...
Decide how to fund them.
You have engineering surveys done by professionals who know what they're doing, right? I don't imagine you're out there in the field double-checking if that soils...
I'm not in there reshelving books either.
Right. Who are you appointing to manage the roads? Professionals who know what they're doing.
We have professionals who are on staff.
Is Austin Rhodes a professional librarian?
Staff, he's an advisory board member.
Much like our planning and zoning, who is in charge of that, are not professional engineers and/or architects.
Do you go through professional engineers and architects?
Just like we go through professional librarians.
Which professional librarians have you consulted recently, sir?
They're on staff.
Which professional librarians have you consulted recently, sir? This is a simple question.
Staff, sir. Professional librarians working for Columbia County.
What are their degrees?
I'm not...
It's just a simple question. My concern specifically, sir, is that I want to see the libraries advised by those with experience, by those who know what the library needs. And I do not feel like that is what is being done at this time.
All right, I believe we have two executive session items. Couch?
I make a motion to approve $2,100 to Pollard Land Company, Inc., parcel 051008H, to obtain temporary and permanent easement for the Little Coyote Creek Sewer Project.
Second.
Standard acquisition.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. On favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
I make a motion to approve $18,900 to Robert Riley, parcel 060064, $55,500 to Steve Koontz, parcel 067C004, and $35,000 to George and Elizabeth Devette, parcel 072248, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Herbert Farm Road widening project.
Second.
Standard acquisition, 68%.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. On favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I believe there's only one more motion that needs to be made.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned.